They are in any.
I know.
We're on, okay. It's six thirty if everybody's staying and joining me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And two, three. You would call the please? Here.
Mr. Daly.
Mr. Harrison.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
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 And if there are no further additions or corrections to this evening council meeting agenda, the agenda will stand as presented. And it's, I will accept a motion to approve the council regular meeting minutes from August eleventh.
Motion to approve, uh, August eleventh, council regular meeting minutes. Second?
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Dane.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Minutes are approved for yays to one abstention. And can I have a motion to, I'll accept a motion to approve the council work session meeting minutes from August sixth?
I don't think, Mr. Daly is here, I don't think we have.
I'll be able to, okay, we will continue to.
We'll just keep pushing that back.
One day, that'll be an official meeting.
And again, that is just a formality that we are taking, it wasn't, we did not vote on anything at that work session, we had presentation, but we'd like it to be on record of the four members that were in attendance. All right, um, we have no proformations this evening and, um, did our visitor want to speak this evening? No? Okay, I will continue on with reports. Um, it's been a busy August, attended the grand opening for CTE Catrinas on August twelfth. It's our new Mexican restaurant and by the, um, view of the parking lot, it is doing quite well, so went to welcome them to Plain City. On the thirteenth, had our semi-quintcentennial meeting, which I will cover later. And then the fourteenth assisted with police interviews and I will let Chief cover the rest of that. Attended Picture Plain City Workshop on August eighteenth. I thought it was a really great turnout, I like to see a little bit more group involvement when we have that many residents in our room, I know that would have been kind of chaotic as well, but there's so many questions that I'd like to see us have some sort of organized forum like that where they can ask questions and then maybe ask staff members to give updates. But other than that, it was a great turnout and appreciate, um, our staff for putting that on. Thank you to Plain City Police and Communications for welcoming our students back to the school year at Plain City Elementary School, that was a fantastic, um, view to come through the, um, tunnel of officers giving high fives and getting the kids excited and just reassuring parents that we have a safe community. And met with Union County Commissioner McCarthy with Ms. Lupton on the twenty-first as well and had good conversations, um, just updating him on everything going on in Plain City. And this week we had the Uptown Business Walk on Wednesday, how many of our council members are able to attend? At one, okay, good, all right, that'll be, that'll be great, um, Mr. Stanford sent out information on that, um, that will be Wednesday. And then we have the ribbon cutting for the clock tower kitchen and bar on Thursday at ten AM and had a team to, um, check that out last week and it's a great addition to our uptown, it kind of feels like you're not really stepping into the clock tower building anymore, so, um, very excited to see how that helps to shape the uptown as well. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and cover planning and zoning, we met on August twentieth and we heard from two developers on concept plans, which you will be seeing, um, later on and we are not, they're not here, they're not here tonight, but they will be coming to council with their concept plans and. Planning and zoning had some feedback and I'm not gonna share the feedback unless you wanna go see the video, um, from the meeting, but I want your fresh opinion too, to just make sure that planning and commission is on the right track with, but aligns with council as well. And I want you to also, you know, it's important to convey what you want for our town during these concept meetings because every developer will come through and they'll say we have the latest and greatest product, but we also have to hone in what, what do we want and how do we want, um, that development to shape our community. We also had public hearings for rezoning of Valentine, um, property and planning commission approved them with conditions and from the staff report to make sure that it aligned again with the vision we had heard from their concept meeting. Fence code with pictures showing code was approved and our next meeting will be Wednesday, September seventeenth at five thirty. And then the semi-quintcentennial committee, we have outlined an itinerary of events, identified key members who asked to be part of the larger committee and we will be working on a communications plan for rolling out the event. So mark Saturday, September twelfth, twenty twenty-six on your calendars for a save the date of the event, which will be announced at a later time. With that, I will, um, Ferguson, Mr. Lewis, do you have anything to add to the semi-quintcentennial?
No, I think that's perfect, thank you.
Okay, um, we're just dangling the carrot a little bit more until we get more information out, but I'll turn it over to Lupton now, our administrator.
Thank you, Mayor, um, Uptown Crosswalk work continues, they are starting to pour concrete, so we're hoping that doesn't take too much longer, um, and they'll move into the internal island, hopefully be able to knock it out pretty soon. Um, the beams are being delivered to Maple Street next Friday, um, so there might be some traffic coordination, um, as those swing around that tight corner, um, and I'll keep everybody updated as we get closer. Wanted to thank everyone in the community who did participate in the comp plan meeting, it was great to see that many people turn out, um, the survey is now live online, um, with the same reflection of the materials and the, the story that was heard that night so everyone can participate and there will be more stakeholder engagement in the future. Um, and the pooch paddle is next Monday, which concludes the aquatics summer season, so that's next Monday, I believe at five o'clock.
Thank you. Thank you, Lupton, Ms. Son, our finance director.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, one of them is the new financial assistant, start Tuesday.
Thank you very much, I know you should be, I'm sure you are very excited for finally several years.
Fifteen years experience in government, so.
Wonderful. Thank you, thank you for that update. And Chief McKee from, for police?
Uh, as you indicated before, we, we conducted our panel interviews, uh, we were lucky, we had three very good interviews that day. Unfortunately, the first person that we picked didn't make it through the background, um, there was an automatic disqualifier, honestly, we started with the background and found out, so we gave a conditional offer to the second candidate, um, he's actually going through the background process right now and he's looking pretty good so far, he's actually a local guy, uh, he's lived here since nineteen ninety-one, so we're hoping that one works out and then, I will discuss the other candidate later on this evening.
All right, thank you, Chief. Uh, Mr. Terry, our council president?
Our work session on September.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lafayette, any update?
Never.
Thank you, Economic Development Committee.
Next meeting is September sixteenth at eleven.
Thank you. DCA, Mr. Harriman?
Uh, we had no meeting in August and we are keeping the trend going with no meeting in September, so nobody putting up a fence on a corner. Right now, or at least not filing a permit for.
And I covered planning and zoning, parks and recreation, Mr. Terry?
Yeah, so we met, um, last Tuesday, maybe two Tuesdays ago, um, among other topics, uh, campground stays came up, um, additionally, obviously, everyone probably saw on the forum that you were talking about it, um, the general thought of, maybe I brought up, you know, that, uh, some members of council in this body might be welcome to continuing limiting the length of stay, um, and what thoughts on that? Generally speaking, the committee was, um, they didn't feel as if, uh, reduction was needed, they weren't against it, if it went down to like three months, um, bigger push that they had was around, um, background checks for length of stay, anything I know for like two weeks, uh, doing like a full bankrupt check, um, there was some conversation about national disqualification on that, who would, how would we do it, side, um, could you get every person that was gonna stay there? It was a healthy debate, um, I tried to stay, keep my opinions out of it as much as possible, um, and let them kind of debate the merits, there were some that saw the merits of reducing it more, obviously, anything over six months, at that point, you're a resident, like you're living at the parks half the year, that's literally what it is. Um, no one, no one was pro extending it, uh, we brought the idea of getting rid of winter camping as a middle ground, um, not a ton of feelings there and not again, with the revenue being smaller, winter, it was a more tolerable, I think, I think the revenue conversation just, it always gets people. Um, I told them I'd bring it up, uh, I told them that obviously this body will make the decision, um, so there's nothing on the discussion topic tonight, it's more something I can put out there if, you know, there's general consensus that we want to move forward, we're restricting it further down to three months, if we wanna do anything like get rid of winter camping, um, those are all options, the committee was pretty anti-going shorter than three months, um, but outside of that, pretty healthy of a debate, they did ask the question of like, you know, i- if it's three months now, is it gonna be a month later, is it gonna be two weeks later, is there a band-aid ripping event that we would do, they would not be for it, but if we are for it, you know, there, I think, in the spirit of honoring their time, they didn't wanna like keep having the debate like over and over and over, I said, that's totally fair, um, so it is what it is, we can discuss it, uh, even upcoming work session or something to see what everyone's thoughts are, but.
Yeah, I, I think seems like with some of the stuff that's kind of was ongoing or kind of still an ongoing issue or discussion with it, probably some merit into adding that to a discussion topic, whether it be a upcoming work session or maybe our next meeting, um, that way, like if we come in and have some questions, maybe, uh, give, you know, Ms. Granger or Ms. that, um, just get some time, maybe get, kind of get some numbers and maybe, you know, we can kind of spit some kind of questions so that way, you know, we kind of can have a, a good informed discussion of.
Yeah.
Different background.
A- and, and, and they had put together some numbers, um, about length of stay and like where the revenue comes from and the number of lengths sake, and we did have a long conversation about like risk mitigation versus like health and safety versus revenue, things of that nature, so worth it, I told them that I brought a report and, uh, we can have a discussion in upcoming work.
I would, I'd like to. Next week's work session or do we have a pool?
Um, right now it's just stormwater, so I think we can.
I mean, it sounds pretty full if that's stormwater, no? I- i- if we are gonna go forward with changes, certainly the sooner we make them, the better, one, to telegraph, two, to allow Linda and the team to implement, you know, they're kind of in like a, it, it's probably unfair to them to leave them hanging on like what they tell people when they apply and things like that, so I'm okay with doing it sooner than later.
Yeah, it's like see some data around as you get that.
I would like to see like what we captured in the winter months and some, with some of the conversations that's come up, I would also maybe propose that we, um, at that work session, like think hard about cutting off winter keeping this year, just start fresh with some of the things that has been circulating and, um, and I know that our police department might appreciate that for the winter months, um, so that's, that's my chiming in on that portion, okay, thank you, Mr. Terry. Um, personnel and finance, oh wait, tomorrow is creaking at the Darby as well, um, what time, it's, it's six, six o'clock.
Six to eight, kind of sounds close.
So at McKittrick Park, mhm, so throwing, throwing that in there as well, um, personnel, finance, Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, no, no update, no, uh, current meeting scheduled.
Do you wanna cover how you came about with the item on the agenda for the.
Or do you want to just wait?
Do you wanna, okay.
Wait till the discussion?
Okay, I see down here, please, Terry, okay, um, fire board, Mr. Sins?
Uh, our next meeting is Thursday, is next Thursday, uh, four, four. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Daly isn't here for Plain City Area Development Corporation and PCBA, Union County Chamber of Commerce and Madison County Chamber, I can cover Madison County, our next meeting is on Tuesday, the second, uh, at noon and we, if anyone would like to attend the Chamber Bonanza, it is October. Sixteenth, um, and is there annual fundraiser, so let me know or let Ms. Lupton or Mr. Dryer know to get registered and we can get that information sent out as well. Mr. Dryer, do you have an update?
Next PCBA, this Wednesday, my third gentleman, um, we feature a guest speaker talking about networking collaboration.
It's Africa, the Africa House, yeah, sorry, I just saw that come through, that's why I was, yeah.
Thank you for helping us.
Anybody is welcome to attend those meetings, uh, and then, Mr. Sins, Union County Chamber, any updates? Okay, thank you, and then we covered the semi-quintcentennial, all right, moving into discussion items, public hearing scheduled for ZZ dash twenty-five dash fourteen, RZ dash twenty-five dash two and RZ dash twenty-five dash three.
So, based on these complaints and requests most recently, um, there are three public hearings that are scheduled for October thirteenth, on what, the number of approval, the code changes to fences, the primary change, as well, is it saved, there's a mandate in the code, uh, or lots designed to reduce high variances of the local cities, and then the reasons are restricted and, which is I want to PDB vote to charge to Mr. McKee properties, again, those are for October thirteenth and this notification is just to you, um, public hearing, which is a council.
The office is open, uncle?
So we do not, um, have to make motions to that? Exactly, and so nice, yes, thank you, Mr. Dryer for that update, and now, police hiring, Ms. Lupton?
Sure, um, you wanna go ahead and explain kind of where we are out in the process?
As a commit, as one of the.
Yeah, so.
We had two people cancel in the, uh, the panel interview, Mr. Lewis agreed to sit in and so did Mr. Harriman that day on the panel interview.
Luckily before.
I said, we had to change the tea time.
Well, probably we didn't sacrifice. Um, yeah, so we, you know, we came out of there, we interviewed four, um, four folks and we came out of there kind of like one A, one B, one C, we were all pretty comfortable. Where we settled on with one A was they were already had been through academy, so you are, or, that was our first, first pick, um, so kind of thinking of where we've been with this whole police hiring stuff for, for years. He is the one who ended up not passing the background, yes, but, so, but knowing that, I, you know, we, we know that Detective Greenbaum, right, sorry, is retiring July, August, sometime next year, so, you know, I just brought up the idea kind of outside the box, like, hey, if we have three good folks right now and, and another one has to go through academy, um, why don't we, you know, my first question was to Ms. Son, obviously from a patient standpoint, but why don't we see if we can put something through the academy because we have a spot in October, um, put them through academy, they wouldn't get out of academy till April first. Somewhere around April and then have the two or, you know, three months kind of in-car training for us until they're ready to be on the road, so that would time up roughly with the July, August timeframe, so, um, you know, I kind of threw that, that idea out there, the, the folks on the, on the panel interview thought that was a decent, um, idea, so we kind of remarked, gave, that was the marching orders we left there with, but when the first pick who had been through academy, you know, fell out of the running, now we essentially have two folks who need to go through academy still, so I, you know, did check the personnel and finance committee pretty quick, uh, that night or the next day to see if they were all in support of still moving forward with, with the two, um, knowing that two had to go through academy, uh, and they were, um, and I think we were able to get a spot in the October academy still, um, for the second person, so we potentially be sending two through academy in October, uh, are, you know, you know, the, the Skyler, the most, the, the, the pick that has to go through academy is coming out of the Marines and, and relocating from Virginia, so I think we're still trying to figure all that out if he can, you know, get out in time to get in October, but if not, the next academy would be in, like, April or so, so I think that, you know, was the plan to basically be sending two through academy at this point, so they'd be coming out in that, you know, April, through our, our, our training, starting April, May timeframe, so, since we know there's a, a pending retirement, I thought, and we knew we had good candidates, I thought, hey, let's take this opportunity to kind of jump at that, so.
Because we're still kind of behind because, um, our newest hire, Police Officer Rubio.
Right.
And then, so, the, um, one that's going through the Octo, and then they, and. Yes, so then we had slated another interview.
So what we're looking at is we have, um, the second one that we gave the conditional offer, he's already, he's already in the background process, he will start in October to the academy, the subject here, speaking, Mr. Lewis was speaking of Skyler, he is still an active Marine, he's been in Marines for ten years, he's in Virginia, uh, he's trying his best right now and we get, if we say yes, he will try to be at the, at the academy in October this year, so that he will go there with the other officer at the same time. If his peers won't let him out of military, uh, with all the information that we've already sent them, then the worst case scenario is he will start the academy in April of next year and not graduate till the end of next year and won't be any good till, probably twenty, twenty-seven, uh, because he'll graduate on, he has to go through our training and by the time he's on his own, we'll probably be the first one in January twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah.
So if we get him through now, in October, if he graduates in April next year, we'll kind of line up with, what we're talking about with retirements.
So, um, what's the, so just to help me understand, so the current individual that's going through like, uh, in car, you said is Rubio's replacement?
Guy that we just hired.
Corey that came from.
Yeah.
Of Norths.
Yep, yep, and then the individual in.
Bailey.
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 Bailey, Bailey. She is. One of the additional.
No, she'll be the twenty twenty-six additional hire.
Placement, so.
Additional head count.
New guy that we're hiring will be the guy that replaces like Rubio.
Cause we had.
The guy from the military.
Yeah.
Hiring a additional officer.
So realistically, we'll only have an extra head count from April till.
And the reason Mr. Lewis brought that up is because we had slated, um, in the budget, we had portioned, um, salary for Officer Rubio's replacement and we hadn't, no, we hadn't, yeah, we hadn't used it, so it's been.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
And so, but, and I, I totally get that, I'm totally fine with that part, I think, and we've talked about this before, it's, for me, the in-year number is of interest, but it's not like really the bigger of interest is the ongoing cost, the next, you know, whatever, uh-uh, but I think it's fine because we're just moving it ahead a few months, so I don't see any issue with this.
I just want to hire next year.
Yeah, I, I don't see any, I don't see, you say that, you should have, you should have. It makes sense.
Somebody believe, I don't know, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
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 Just trying to prevent, you know, eating two or three months, prevent a six to nine month hole, assuming we had good candidates then.
Yeah, it's, it makes sense.
I was saying, yeah, because we discussed, it was like you kind of had it in the budget, we're really just trying to be six months ahead of the game or nine months ahead of the game. If, if everything works.
Yeah, and not go through the whole interview process again of finding candidates and interviewing and all of that.
Is, is there anything, um, I guess with background check, anything that if on the mer, on his side through the Marines, if he doesn't get out in time or isn't able to meet that October date, still can meet that April date with us, is there anything that process that would have to start over again backgrounds, I mean, anything that would be shows up?
Like, he, he is scheduled to come here, he's coming from Virginia here, that's an eight-hour drive, uh, to do the back, the polygraph, the psychological, the police and fire physical and our physical agility, all of that, next Thursday and Friday, so once he does that, he's done and he's good for almost, I mean, even if he has academy people, he'll be good till then, for that, he wouldn't have to come back, we would probably just ask him to sign a contract if we're on a destiny and stuff, so, um, just same as we do with every cadet, and he's, I mean, he's very, you guys saw, he's coming, he's from Falmouth, he's been in Virginia for ten years in the military, he's Marine, he just got promoted actually, um, but he's ready to get out, he's ready to come here and start, you know, Plain City was like one of the top picks.
I have no problem with it.
Okay, all right.
Is it gonna require a budget or based on the way the?
Probably by the end of the year if they both started the cadet training and.
We always gotta do, we always had to do a, we always had to do a supplemental there.
I think we'll be. We didn't have to, like, positions built right away.
Sure.
But right now, all you need, we feel like, right?
Okay, would you make a motion?
Oh, do we?
I, yeah, for the record, just for the two conditional officer.
A motion that we move forward with the, uh, two officers, two cadets.
Now, if something works, oh, I'm sorry, if something doesn't work out for you guys,
Yeah, but if you started again, uh, you, it would take you that long anyway, I think, so.
Should we amend that?
We're lucky to get, uh, a spot, that's what's insurance, to get another spot into the academy.
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis? Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Pass, five to zero, to move forward with two cadets. Okay, and.
We have, someone remind us though, when Detective Greenbaum retires that he's not allowed to backfill again.
All right, um, we have a motion to release the maintenance bond for the Madison Meadows Pavilion contingent upon the completion of ground restoration including seating and trees.
Well, why don't we just wait until the.
They're gonna finish the townhomes, um, and then just do it all at once, so it all measures, um, maintenance bonds are pretty expensive for developers to hold on to, this is the request that we've made. It should be this fall.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, they're still around, um, you know, we have other.
I mean, it's not, the, the bond's not completed, right? So they're asking for something?
Yeah, it's not a huge, it's not a huge.
Do we want anything, do, do we want an extra tree or something? I mean, they're, they're asking, it's, it's, they're the ones saving money, right? So.
Yeah, technically, um, but, yeah, we're, I'm okay.
It better be beautiful tree.
They're already out there, they just wanna make sure they truly die before they replace them, which is.
Gonna release the maintenance bond for Madison Meadows Pavilion contingent upon the completion of the ground restoration including beautiful seating and tree.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes five A's to zero M's. Moving into unfinished business, second reading ordinance twenty-six dash twenty-two-five, amending the codified ordinances, chapter eleven sixty-one, B one Neighborhood Business District, a part eleven of the Planning and Zoning Code.
Motion to approve second reading ordinance twenty-six dash twenty-two-five.
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes. Ordinance twenty-six dash twenty-two-five is approved. Second reading ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty-two-five, amending the codified ordinances, chapter eleven sixty-five, B three Central Business District, of part eleven of the Planning and Zoning Code.
Motion to approve second reading ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty-two-five.
Second.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson? Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty-two-five is approved, five A's to zero M's. Second reading ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty-two-five, amending the codified ordinances, chapter eleven sixty-nine, I one Restricted Industrial District, of part eleven of Planning and Zoning Code.
Motion to approve second reading ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty-two-five.
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty-two-five is approved. Second reading ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty-two-five, amending the codified ordinances, chapter eleven seventy-one, I two Limited Industrial District, of part eleven of the Planning and Zoning Code.
Motion for second reading ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty-two-five.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty-two-five is approved. Second reading ordinance thirty dash twenty-two-five, amending the codified ordinances, removal of chapter eleven seventy-five, O L R Office Laboratory and Research District, of part eleven of the Planning and Zoning Code.
Motion to approve second reading ordinance thirty dash twenty-two-five.
Second.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty dash twenty-two-five is approved. Second reading ordinance thirty-one dash twenty-two-five, of providing for the issuance and sale of unvoted general obligation notes in the maximum aggregate principal amount of one million four hundred and twenty-five thousand in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the costs of various municipal improvement projects and declaring an emergency.
To approve second reading ordinance thirty-one dash twenty-two-five, and declaring a emergency.
Second. Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yeah.
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-one dash twenty-two-five is approved. Second reading ordinance thirty-two dash twenty-two-five, providing for the issuance and sale of unvoted general obligation notes in the maximum principal amount of one million five hundred and fifty thousand in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the costs of improving the municipal park system by acquiring real estate to be used for constructing open gathering places and public parking, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Motion to approve ordinance thirty-two dash twenty-two-five, and declare an emergency.
Yes.
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 Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-two dash twenty-two-five is approved. Second reading ordinance thirty-three dash twenty-two-five, providing for the issuance and sale of unvoted general obligation notes in the maximum principal amount of one million dollars in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the costs of acquiring real estate to be used for municipal purposes, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Motion to approve ordinance thirty-three dash twenty-five, and declare an emergency.
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yeah.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-three dash twenty-two-five is approved. Second reading resolution forty dash twenty-two-five, amending the posted speed limit on North Chillicothe Street to twenty-five miles per hour.
Do we decide to do this forty-two?
Yes, we're going to do it always to forty-two.
Don't worry, we'll change it back.
Oh, don't worry. Just keep everybody under.
All cards are played out. Yeah, don't throw it, son.
I would accept that, for you.
Motion to approve forty, twenty-five.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Resolution forty dash twenty-two-five is approved, five A's to zero M's. Moving, first reading resolution forty-one dash twenty-two-five, authorizing and directing the village administrator to enter into a pre-annexation agreement with Clayton Properties Group Incorporated. First, resolution forty-two dash twenty-five, of making this agreement between the Village of Plain City and the Miami Valley Steam Thusters Association Incorporated for the use of certain areas of pastime park. First reading resolution forty-three dash twenty-two-five, authorizing and directing the village administrator to enter into a pre-annexation agreement with Polte Homes of Ohio. And this includes our public portion of tonight's meeting. There will be no perjury after the executive session. We will be entering executive session pursuant to Ohio Public Code, section one twenty-one dot two-two G two, to consider the purchase of property for public purposes. I would accept a motion to enter executive session.
Motion to enter executive session?
Second.
Ms. Ferguson? Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero, and we are entering. Here, and, um, Ms. Lepton, we want to include.
Um, Chief McKee, Ms. Son, it, Mr. Dryer.
Yeah, okay.